Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council. Mayor Teresa Tomlinson. City Manager Isaiah Hughley. Pops Barnes, District 1. Glenn Davis, District 2. Bruce Huff, District 3. Evelyn Turner-Pugh, Mayor Pro Tem and District 4. Mike Baker, District 5. Gary Allen, District 6. Mimi Woodson, District 7. Walker Garrett, District 8. Judy Thomas, Post 9 at Large Counselor. Skip Henderson, Post 10 at Large Counselor. Tony Washington, Clerk of Council. And City Attorney Clifton Fay. Columbus, Georgia. This is your City Council.
Well, good evening. Welcome to a special called meeting of the Columbus City Council. Of course, it's June 27th. We were not anticipating meeting, but we had a few items that just needed our attention. And so council can make that decision, and they have. And we've come together for a fairly short agenda as far as in number of items. But who knows how long we'll be here. So we appreciate your patience as always. We want to go ahead and get started. We always need a little prayer. And so we've got Reverend Dr. Ralph Hewling here, who's with the St. James Missionary Baptist Church. He's going to kick us off with his invocation, consistent with his faith tradition. If you would come up, sir, to the podium. We very much appreciate you being here this evening. Up over here, yeah.
Maybe we begin by bowing our heads. Most high God, who is the giver of all good and perfect gifts. Dear heaven and father, Lord, we delight ourselves in thee because of your many blessings and your abundant provisions. And oh, Lord, our Lord, how excellent is thy name in all the earth. Heavenly Father, tonight, we just want to say thank you, master. We thank you, dear God, Lord, for your sovereignty. We thank you for your omniscience, omnipotence, and omnide presence. Heavenly Father, we pray tonight your divine presence in this abode, in this meeting. Heavenly Father, as we are on the brink of a national holiday, dear God, Lord, which we call Independence Day, Lord, we thank thee, heavenly Father, that we are a country where we exercise freedom and we are not under dictatorship. Lord, we thank you that we have rights and privileges that other nations do not enjoy. Lord, we pray now, heavenly Father, Lord, for this city council and this mayor, dear God, who you've given tremendous responsibilities to, dear God, but and you've also given them tremendous assets. For to whom much is given, much is required. Dear God, Lord, we thank you for a city that is concerned about families, but we realize that out of the institutions of society, that the family is the most important institution of all society, because all the other institutions emanate from the family. So heavenly Father, we pray, dear God, Lord, that as they make decisions here at this council meeting and all future meets, dear God, Lord, they would consider family, the needs of families. And heavenly Father, Lord, we just pray that you would give them a very conscious awareness of your divine presence. We pray for our public safety officials, dear God, Lord, Chief Boring and all of those that work diligently with him and the other public safety officials to keep our city from being under anarchy. And so heavenly Father, Lord, we just pray your blessings upon our city, dear God, Lord, that we might be a bright and shining light for our Lord. And it's in the matchless name of Jesus, who is our Christ, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Reverend Hewling, thank you so much for your time this evening, and thank you for what you do also to serve us to the city, not just through your faith-based mission, but otherwise. We appreciate that very, very much. And now we have a real treat. We've got our Parks and Rec Summer Camp is here to help lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So we're going to ask them to come and assemble in the front here. Lindsay has a microphone for you. And as they get in order here, if you all would stand and prepare for them to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, legitimate, and justiciable law.
Excellent. Wow. That was so good. That was just so good. I'm telling you, we can't, we can't wait to meet you all. Tell us your name and what grade you're in. Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, because we talked about this. They want to tell us their name, how old they are, and what school they go to. Okay.
I go to LPS, and I'm five years old, and I'm in first grade.
Okay, and what's your name?
Trent Abrams.
Okay.
My name is Roman. I go to first grade. My name is six.
Okay.
My name is Kashawn. I'm eight. I go to JD Davis.
Okay.
My name is Talia Abrams, and I go to S- I mean, and I go to Lakewood Park area, and I go to second grade.
Okay.
My name is Amelia Johnson, and I'm seven years old, and I go to JD Davis.
My name is Makai Small. I'm seven years old, and I go to Blount County Elementary.
My name is Simone. I'm 10 years old, and I'm going to Blackman Road.
My name is Lindsay Rose. I'm from Roll Hill Elementary School, and I'm seven, I mean, eight years old.
Okay, speak up a little bit.
My name is Isaiah, and I'm six years old, and I go to New Mountain Hill.
All right, well, turn around so we can see you. There we go. Okay.
My name is Clive, and I go to my school. And I'm one.
No.
I'm six.
Oh. We've got, did we have some more? Yeah, we got two more. Yeah, just tell us your name and what school you go to.
My name's Kevin Green, and I'm 11, and I go to Fort Middle School.
All right.
My name is Abigail Browder. I'm 10, and I go to LES.
All right. Well, I know, I do want to say that we've got KJ is the city manager's nephew. So thank you all for being here. Let's give them a big round of applause. And we, we do want to hear from our camp workers. Will you all come forward and introduce yourselves? I know you've got your hands full, obviously, so literally. Oh.
I'm Sharon Calhoun, and I'm the site supervisor at downtown LA.
Okay, great, great.
I'm Nikia White, and I'm Activity Leader at Clubview Elementary.
Okay. And we got one other. Do you want to introduce her?
I'm Betty Atkins. I'm from Comanche.
Okay, all right. And we've got one in the back. Thank you all. We've got some parents, too. If you're a parent, proud parent, raise your hand, supporter, friend. All right, thank you all. Okay, first, we had the special call meeting for the original purpose of discussing Recorder's Court. We have a, a formal subcommittee of council has met, and they want to report back to council and perhaps take some action. So I will open it up for discussion at this time. Counselor Thomas.
Thank you, Mayor. At our meeting last week, council appointed Counselor Allen, Counselor Barnes, and me to be the Committee of Council to do the oversight with the Recorder's Court. And we have met twice since then. At both meetings, our internal auditor, excuse me, and forensic auditor have been there with us. Today, we also had Mr. Larry Love, who is the interim administrator in the Recorder's Court, and Director Rita Holwell, who is our HR manager, meet with us to help give us some guidance. And we have a report for you tonight. A, it's an oral report, but we think that we are moving in the right direction. One of the things that you have, council has been provided with, is a document that the top of it says Chapter 6 Recorder's Court. This is from the city charter, and this pretty much outlines the responsibilities and the requirements for council as to what our oversight and what our responsibilities with the Recorder's Court, what that is. You will notice, one of the things that we found as we've been meeting and talking is that at various times, various personnel in various departments are called various things, and they all do the same thing. You'll notice that we are charged with appointing the recorder. And what we have typically called that position has been the judge, and we are calling that on our materials from here on, the chief judge of Recorder's Court. And then the council, during our budget hearings and adoption and so forth, established the position of the clerk of the court. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. Can I show, Ms. Watson, could we have the organizational chart? You will see, and again, you have a copy of this, council, you have a copy of this, that this is, this outlines, as organizational charts do, the lines of administration and responsibility for the various positions in the court. The chief judge is the, has the responsibility of the administrator or manager of all of the other personnel in that court. And reporting directly to that chief judge will be the clerk of court. This is a new position. We are in the process of writing the job description for that position. But that clerk of court then reports directly to the chief judge. The judges' pro tem, you will recall that we talked about when we were doing our budget processing, that the chief judge, different, in a different manner than they are now, will hold court both the morning and afternoon sessions. But we need what are called judges' pro tem to be available to work vacations or when that judge is sick, and to work the Saturday court session. Then the environmental court judge, typically that position, that person does environmental court, period. They sometimes, and they will be available in this setup, also substitute for the chief judge if, if necessary. But the judges' pro tem and the environmental court judge will be, again, reporting directly to the chief judge, and the chief judge has the responsibility of selecting those. We talked about the judges' pro tem, how many we need, and we did not set a number for that. However many the judge thinks that, that we need, we can, they will not be paid until they hold a session. And so, you know, he can have as many people on that substitute list as he needs to. The fourth position there that reports to the chief judge is the court reporter. We currently have a court reporter who is under contract. This person is not an employee of the city of Columbus. This is a contract position. And that, that contract for the court reporter was scheduled to expire Friday. And we said, wait, well, we probably need, and, and so the finance department and purchasing department have extended the contract of the current court reporter for 180 days, for another six months, so that we have a little breathing room then to, to hire some of these other folks that we need to get hired and get them in place. And then you'll see that there are two divisions in the Recorder's Court. There's the financial division, and they are, that's the division that collects the money and collects the fines and all of those kinds of things. And then there's the judicial division, and among other things, that division sets the docket and files the report and those kinds of things. There are, there would be a supervisor, there currently is a supervisor of each one of those divisions, and under those, that supervisor, there are judicial or administrative technicians. And I, at this point, I know that there are Tech 2 and I think Tech 3. Is that right, Mr. Love? Tech 2 and Tech 3 grade level? But those, those positions report to the supervisors. The supervisors report to the clerk of court, and the clerk of court reports to the chief judge. So we are hoping with this organizational chart, we will have a, a better handle on who's in charge and who, who does what along that line. We are in the process of writing the job description for the chief judge. The committee, Counselor Allen and Counselor Barnes and I, felt that the chief judge position should be filled next, because that chief judge then will work with all of those on that second level and should have some input into who those people are. And so we are in the process of looking at the chief judge position. We are using both the offices of Ms. Holwell and the HR department, and Ms. Barfield in the internal auditors department, to get information for us from other places on what needs to be in that job description and how it should read. We are also working with the clerk of court job description. Currently, there has been posted a job description for the clerk of court, and we have asked the HR department to take that job description down. We have tweaked that job description a little bit, but because that position will report directly to the chief judge, we felt like the chief judge should have some input, if you will, into that arrangement. And so that position will be, that job description will be taken down for the time being. We, we have not reworked, to any great extent, the clerk of councils, I mean, the clerk of courts position, but there are some changes that we felt needed to be made, and we think might have more once we get the chief judge put into place. And then the final thing that I, or one of the final things I want to report to you tonight, as you may remember, we appointed several months ago, Mr. Larry Love as the interim administrator in the Recorder's Court. And he, his agreement with us is set to expire again this Friday. You may also recall that last week, Counselor Henderson suggested that we do ankle monitor and not let him leave. Well, we're not going to do quite that, Counselor Henderson, but we have talked with Mr. Love, and he has agreed that there are a number of projects that are going on in that, in the Recorder's Court that he would like to see through. And so we're going to work with him and extend his time with us, probably for another 30 to 60 days. He won't be there every day, but he will be helping us out. Additionally, it's our intention to come back to you probably on the 11th with a recommendation that we hire a, an interim clerk of court until we can get the judge selected and the new clerk of court selected. And that person would work in tandem with Mr. Love until we get, he gets his feet on the ground or whatever. But that, we'll bring that back to you probably on the 11th. We are meeting, as I said, we've had two meetings. We intend to meet again on July the 3rd. And Ms. Glisten, if you and the clerk of court, uh, council will advertise meeting at 2:00 on July the 3rd here in this facility, it is a, it is a meeting that is open to the public if, if any public folks want to come to that meeting. I would refer to Counselor Allen and Counselor Barnes if there are other things that we need to report, or if you have questions, Counselor Barnes and Counselor Allen will answer them. But whatever, if, if anybody has anything, Counselor Barnes or Counselor Allen?
You did a good job.
We've got, Counselor Woodson.
Hi. This is very good. I had a question. Are these Judge Administrator Tech 2 and 3, are these already filled? Or do they need to be filled? So how many are in each office?
I believe there are six of each. Six in the finance and six in judicial. But those, those, all of the positions, the supervisors and the technician positions are all filled, currently filled.
Thank you.
All right. Well, it looks like there's no other, no other discussion or questions at this point. So is there motion that needs to be made?
Mayor, we would like to be on the agenda on the 11th to bring you another report. We've, we've talked about, you know, what needs to be authorized by council and what may not need to be authorized by council, but in, as, because we are the representatives of council can make some of those kinds of decisions. But we would like to be on the agenda then on the 11th.
Excellent. Lindsay, if you make a note of that. And now, is there any vote that needs to be taken regarding extending Mr. Love's time, or is that just administratively done?
He says administratively.
Okay. All right. Looks like we're good to go. We've got Counselor Barnes.
I just want to, because we were going back and forth, we really feel, appreciate, Larry, you standing on during this nebulous period. This is a virgin type of period. We have never embarked on anything like this here, so we appreciate it. And John and Ms. Barfield also during our meetings, they, they contributed a great deal of information, and we appreciate all of their expertise in this matter. And we're, she, yeah, and Rita, she's not out there, and Rita as well.
All right. Great. Well, good job. Looks like we made some great progress. Thank you all for your efforts. And with that, we will leave the mayor's agenda, head into the city manager's agenda. We're going to pull forward the presentation from Angelica Alexander regarding the responses to the payroll conversion issue, and because I, there's quite a few people here who've worked a full day, and I'm sure they'd like to get on home. So with that, Mr. City Manager.
I think you've already announced, Mayor.
Well, you got, you got two other, you got one other item.
Well, I've got two items, and Angelica is going to come forward with the responses to the payroll conversion, bonus pay referrals.
Thank you.
We're ready.
I'm just waiting for him to pass it out to Counselor there. All right, good evening. So this presentation is just in response to some referrals that were given by council, council last Tuesday. And so first, I'd like to just start out with sort of why, why we're here. Back in February of 2016, council was advised that the Financial and Budgeting System server was well, well beyond its useful life. This presentation was made by Deputy City Manager Pam Hodge. A new server would have required an upgrade to the latest versions of the financial and budgeting software. And so recommendation was made to council to approve a 10-year commitment for a hosted solution that provides an overall cost savings to the city. And so with that recommendation, council approved upgrading the financial budgeting and human resources slash payroll systems with the vendor hosting and managing these applications. Now, conversion of the financial and budgeting systems were completed in January of 2017. It's a very strenuous process, a lot of time and effort put in by the finance department and IT staff to complete that conversion. It started in May of 2016, and we completed conversion in January. So it's quite the feat to get these two systems converted in such a short period of time. But conversion for the human resources and payroll system actually began in February of 2017. And so once we get all three systems online on this hosted solution, the benefit for the city is that it keeps us current on all of our software versions, and it, it makes routing for upgrades a lot easier. We are, we have to upgrade the system as upgrades become available, so we'll always keep up with the latest and greatest software for the system. And it also increases functionalities and self-service capabilities for the employees. You'll be able to go online and check your W2s, check your paycheck stubs, and that sort of thing, which is a functionality that we currently do not have with our old mainframe system. So completion of the human resources and payroll system conversion is crucial, because our IT department is migrating all programs off the mainframe. Currently, the annual cost of maintaining the mainframe is more than $600,000. That's on an annual basis. The mainframe application itself is antiquated. It's costly, obviously, and it, and the functions, they're not integrated with new web-based systems. So, you know, one of the things that was presented or made mention is, you know, taking online payments in Recorder's Court and with the old mainframe system and its limited capabilities, that's one of the things that we're having difficulty doing outside of a complete system overhaul. So what it also does with us getting off of the old mainframe system is that it limits our dependencies on this aging sort of data. And it also puts us in a place with us being a hosted solution that we'll have disaster recovery should anything occur, and, and sufficient backups. And one thing that's key with the mainframe system, the two most integral systems that's currently still on the mainframe is currently still on the mainframe is the human resources and payroll system, and then the court management system. So, those are the last two big components of the mainframe system that we're eventually trying to migrate off of. So, one of the other issues that's critical with this payroll conversion is that we process time as it's worked, and therefore creating the lag for the biweekly employees. Believe it or not, our biweekly employees represents about 82% of our full-time employees. And thus far, the city has invested approximately $1.75 million to implement and convert all three of these systems. And that's just hard dollars. That's not including the soft dollars that we've invested as a city with the staff within the IT department, the finance department, the HR department, all the time that they've spent on this project since February. They're doing their normal jobs plus the project. So, it's been quite stressful for us, I know in finance, for more than years, because this is the sort of last leg of the major system conversions for us.
Angelica, before you get into the referrals, I want to add one, one other thing. Our staff is so professional and so thorough. When they come here and they brief council on this, they always give you the very thorough reasons why. When they speak with me, they sometimes are quite candid. And I think you left one out that very much caught my attention, and that is our current software system is simply not supported anymore. They don't support it anymore. Nobody supports it anymore.
That's correct.
So, if there's some software snafu, and the checks aren't printing, and the computer crashes, there's just, somebody better pull out a pen and some paper checks, because it's not going to be printed through this system. So, that's the, one of the sort of practical reasons is that we have waited so long to do this, nobody supports the software. If anything goes wrong with it, it's just broken, and no checks for anybody. 2,700 people will be printed. So, that's sort of a real world, in addition to all the, the other things of us wanting to be best practices and wanting to have people have access to their pay stubs online and all those great bells and whistles, the, the primary functionality I think people care about is we're using a system that if anything happens to it, no checks are printed, and nobody can help us. So, I think that's not, that's certainly not best practices. It's just not a way to function a city of this size. Anyway, go ahead. I'm sorry for-
I'm glad you mentioned that. I actually was intending to say that, but thank you. So, the first referral question was, what about converting weekly paid employees? What about, I'm sorry, what about not converting weekly paid employees to a biweekly pay cycle? So, the response to that would be, you know, eliminating weekly pay cycle reduces associated costs that include, but are not limited to, the banking fees that we pay. We pay per transaction every time we submit a direct deposit into someone's bank account. Every time we receive money back into our bank account where, because it was returned for whatever reason, those are banking fees, real banking fees that, that we pay. And then, there's also the cost of printing, you know, the pay advices. But most importantly, converting the weekly employees to a biweekly pay cycle just puts all employees on a, on a uniform pay cycle. I pulled the, I had IT to pull a current workforce report, and this report was pulled as of January, I'm sorry, June 21st, 2017. And on the report, it showed currently on our workforce, we have 886 full-time employees that are grade 12 and below. Out of that 886 employees, 384 of those employees are on a weekly pay cycle currently. But the majority of the employees that are grade 12 and below, which represents 502 people, those individuals are paid biweekly. So, we have more biweekly employees that are grade 12 and below than we have weekly. And again, a uniform pay cycle will help minimize any negative impact to employees when departments fail to enter employees' time in a timely manner. We do have the capability now with our old mainframe system with writing manual checks. So, if a department says, hey, I forgot to put in this employee's time, I need to request a special check. In the current mainframe system, we are able to do that so that the employees are not without pay for the time that they've worked. Unfortunately, with us being on this new hosted solution, we will no longer be able to issue manual checks in the finance department. And so, what that means is, you know, with employees being paid every week, if there's a week for whatever reason, or just a timing issue where the timekeeper for the particular department doesn't get the time entered for that employee on time, we won't be able to issue that employee a manual check. And so, we do have those instances with particularly the folks that are paid on a weekly basis.
We have Counselor, so I guess the point there being, that's one good thing about going to biweekly, you would have time to get the-
You would have time to get the time in.
And have their paycheck be accurate.
That's correct.
Okay. Counselor Thomas.
How often does the timekeeper not enter the employee's time in a timely manner?
We process-
How often does that happen?
Pretty much, I mean, all the time. I don't, I can't give you statistics right now.
You're kidding.
Wait, now, hold on before we get upset as if somebody's doing something wrong. The way people work sometimes, like, let's say tornadoes, ice storms, you know, can affect hours.
Well, I understand that. But those are, those are not, the way she's saying it, this is, happens regularly on a weekly basis.
Okay. Well, let's talk about, other than just assuming that people aren't doing their job, let's talk about why that might happen.
And it's not that it may be the employee's paycheck. It could be overtime. You know, maybe the timekeeper forgot to put overtime hours for whatever reason on an employee's paycheck. And again, if that employee's due that money, we have the capability now of issuing them a check for that overtime pay. So, it's not-
And how often does that happen?
I mean, it happens.
Well, if you want us to bring you back how often it happens, we'll bring that, but it happens. We can't tell you that it happens that there are 50 checks every pay period. No. But it happens. And if it happens to one person because we know what they're paid, that, that's a crisis for us. We got to get that person paid. It happens.
I understand that. I, I understand it, but I'm just, it just blows my mind that one of the reasons that we need to change the pay cycle is because somebody's not entering-
No. I think the point that you made is when we go to the new system-
You'll have your time.
-that with the weekly pay cycle, it would create a dilemma because that, that system will not allow that. And if there are two weeks, it's not an issue because we can fix it.
Right.
Right.
That's the point you're making.
So, let me ask you this. This might explain it. So, if you're working Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and you're going to get a paycheck on Friday, I guess, is that when it comes in or on Monday? When does a paycheck come in? If you're working weekly?
Oh, paychecks are issued on Fridays.
Okay. Friday. So, you worked overtime Thursday night. Might not be entered, I guess, by Friday, by, when you cut the check. So, tell, explain us how, how that works when weekly, because what you're saying is the two weeks allows time for people to get those, those hours in and get their time right and into you. But the weekly doesn't necessarily allow that time. So, explain the timing of people working, this, this person getting it in and turning it into you.
Well, the turnaround time for overtime in that particular, in the instance you just described, that's not exactly how it would work.
Okay.
We don't pay, the weekly paid employees are already on a lag. So, any overtime that they would be due for that Friday would be as of the prior week. Right. So, but it's just, you know, we are, we do what we can in the finance department currently. We do, we issue checks, special checks all the time for just various scenarios that may happen with employees. That was just, actually, the, the not entering the time is actually one example that I gave. But it's just, we feel for the employees, and we want to make sure that they receive compensation when it's due and when it's expected. And so, they're just, there are, there are things that happen, you know, every week as to why an employee may not receive all of the compensation that's due. I can't say exactly how often specifically that happens, but it does happen. So-
With weekly?
With weeklies.
But not with biweekly?
It happens sometimes with biweekly, depending on the circumstance.
Is it, does it happen less or as often with biweekly?
Um, I would say it doesn't happen as often with biweekly employees. Most cases with biweekly employees, we have the issue, we don't have the issue of not giving them enough money. Most cases with biweekly employees, we have the issue of giving them too much money because they're currently paid as of that current, that payroll. So, we process payroll on Tuesday, expecting them to be there on Friday for the biweekly people, and sometimes that's just not the case.
Okay. All right. We've got, let's see here, let's see, we've got Counselor Huff.
If you would, let's go back over referral number two and walk me through.
Oh, I haven't gotten number two yet.
We're not at number two yet.
We're not there yet.
Well, she just mentioned that. She said the cost of giving the weekly employees an additional 20 hours. Did you mention that?
No, not yet.
You didn't?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, let me back up here. I'm reading ahead.
Let me go to number-
The three, the 384 out of the 886 that are paid weekly?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what my concern is right there. The biweekly is a 502, also a concern. Anybody losing money at this point?
Everybody's losing money.
And the reason I say losing money because the math just doesn't add up. I keep going through it, keep going through it. That last amount of money goes into next year. They don't receive it by December 31st.
Well, let me just say this, because I, you know, want to be clear. You know, at the end of each year, if it's, if there's 25 checks instead of 26, that pay period may have started Saturday, December 24th. And, and they go a week with that pay in December, and then they don't get paid until that Friday, that first Friday in January. And so, they, they didn't get that 26th check because the first check came in January, but it was for half, it was for the last five days of December, and the first five days of the new year. And so, if you really want to see what they made in that, in, let's say, 16, you got to go and split the check and know that they got five days in December, and five days in December 16, and five days in January of 17.
So, they report five days of that on their tax return?
And, and so, on the W2, I don't know how it shows up, but-
The W2 is paycheck date driven.
Look, employees-
We're just trying to have last week or early week or anything like that. We're just all trying to get the same things, okay? So, it's like we're in public forums and- Adam, sorry.
So, so on the W2, would it, with the last five days of December 16 show up on the 16 W2, or because the check was delivered the first Friday in January, would it show up on the 17 W2?
It would show up on the 17 W2.
That's my point. But five days of that was for five days in 16, to your point.
Yeah, yeah. But moving it back from December to August, I'll have more questions later because you hadn't gotten to referral two yet. But I think that we need to look at that next one real closely at trying to figure out how to make them whole going through that August-September timeframe to get through, back to school and different bills. Because like I said, we have agreed on our end as far as the mayor and city manager to write letters and things, but that's no guarantee that the utility companies or the landlords will honor the letters. So, people could be, anybody on a weekly, weekly deal could be put out, really could. But I, I'll hold my other questions, because I have more questions about referral two.
Well, and I do want to make one final point about when that pay is delivered. Was it last year? They got 27 checks?
2015.
2015, there were 27 checks, and it's all in how the pay periods, they should have got-
I mean, I follow you, and I agree.
Yeah.
But I'm just saying, our problem right now is August.
And there were no complaints about 27 checks that year.
And this conversion, we're trying to figure out why we can't convert the system and they get all of their money. And if there's an issue with lag time and we're giving them, you know, I have to believe that the employees are not leaving us based on they got an extra week of paycheck and they just skip off to Arizona. I don't think that's going to happen. But if there's something that says they can repay us if they leave the city, you take it out of the last check or something, I'm trying to figure out how to make them with the 40 hours right now in August, everybody, so they can move forward. And then, we go into the new system, and the new system will take care of itself. When they all get on biweekly, we should be fine.
Okay. We have Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a few questions. What is the cost of this financial software upgrade?
Total cost over a 10-year period is 6.95 million.
10 years, 6.95 million?
Yes, sir.
What are these bank fees that you're talking about up here that you pay annually to process checks or whatever, however? What, what are we talking about there? How much money are we talking about a year?
Paying banking fees?
Yeah, what you're talking about up here.
I see, we pay about, I think it's about 50, 60,000. That's a rough number. I mean, it varies.
Okay. Can you, seems like a quite sophisticated system for that kind of money. Can't you program, program the system any way you want to?
Um, not necessarily. The system itself, the product that we-
Can the software be adjusted to meet our needs?
To a certain extent, it can. But what we've, what we have in, in that we're a hosted solution is it's, we've accepted a, a baseline product, and for the most part, we are making adjustments here and there to acclimate our current processes to the, the product.
So, you can make adjustments. So, what, what does it normally cost to make these adjustments?
That information, I'll have to get specifically from the vendor. I mean, part of us receiving this overall cost saving over, over a 10-year period because, I mean, the, the system itself, for what we're getting, we're getting three systems, the budgeting system, the financial system, and the human resources and payroll system. With those three systems, there's reporting, there's an employee self-service system, there's a manager self-service system, there's also-
So, the software is really being designed for our government setup?
Well, it's, the software itself is-
The operations of our government.
Well, I mean, the software itself is robust, and the vendor that we use do deal with a lot of municipalities. But what we purchased, for all of the items that we're getting, it was purchased as a package, and we purchased, purchased it as a baseline product. So, there isn't much customization that we can do to the product itself without there being a cost.
Well, and it, it would just seem to me for this kind of product that you would be able to customize it and make adjustments to the software.
For a price, I mean, anything's possible.
Exactly. So, what, that's what I asked. What, what kind of price would it cost to make some adjustments?
So, is your question, let me understand. Yeah, because the system that we are attempting to go to would be where we pay all by employees biweekly. And so, is your question whether we would go into this new software and still pay the 300 and whatever on a weekly basis, and then others, and continue biweekly for those who are current?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know any numbers. That's why I'm asking a question. My question is, if you were to customize it and go in and make a change- dealing with payroll, not all the other things. That's, that's, that's already set up.
Yeah.
What typically would that cost be? What would it cost to make that kind of adjustment? They have.
Well, I think we can get that number, but I was just trying to determine whether you were, whether you're interested in the option of paying people weekly and paying people biweekly.
No, I'm, no, no, the city manager. I'm, I'm really trying to understand this whole matter of making the adjustment, getting everybody on biweekly, because it's becoming so complicated that it seems to be a costly matter just to get it to that.
Now, the, the system that is being presented is to get everybody on biweekly.
Well, that's understandable. I mean, that's what's being presented. That's not even, I mean, everybody understands that.
Well, maybe I'm not following your question.
Well, let me ask you this question. What, what does it cost, this bonus program that we're doing, to make the adjustment? How much is that?
Let's see, um, referral number two.
What is that? Okay. So, we're gonna say a million. Okay. And then, I think last week, I asked a question about if we were to cover for the weekly employees, if we were to cover those employees with another bonus, it would be an additional million. Is that what somebody said? Your last meeting?
Uh, no, so, sorry, I'm just reading referral number two. The question was, what is the cost of only giving weekly employees an additional 20 hours on top of the original 20-hour bonus? So, the cost to do that is 131 dollars, uh, 131,367 dollars. Um, that would be the cost to increase, uh, weekly employees, um, to a 20 hour, to 40-hour bonus as opposed to 20. Um, the cost for the biweekly employees, um, to do that same, um, to give them that same increase is 94,825 dollars.
Okay, um, I understand. I, I, I might be a little ahead of you here, but, so what you're telling me is that the concern that we all have here, I think, is that we've got employees who are being paid by the week, are gonna miss a week, and they live paycheck to paycheck. It doesn't matter if they get an increase later. It's that week that's gonna hammer them during a very, very, uh.
I think they're getting it before.
Well, Mayor, it's just a tou, at that time of the year, if you have kids or anything like that, you understand that it's difficult.
I understand, I just think they're getting it before, so it doesn't have to be part of the.
Where they're getting a bonus before, but they're missing a paycheck. They're missing 270 dollars during that pay period. They'll get it when they get their next check, but they've got to make up during that week. They've got to make up that amount. I understand it. Um, so, that amount, you're telling me that amount, when we talked about it last week, the additional 20 hours for those that we were saying that were being paid weekly, okay, is the 131,000 dollars here. That's what it would cost to cover that additional 20 hours?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
For the, for the weekly people?
For the weekly, yes.
Okay, I'm finished. Thank you.
And you do have, as she may have later on, you do have people at the same pay grade or lower who are biweekly, who will go three weeks without.
Right.
Yeah, 'cause if you look at a, an administrative secretary who's on biweekly, they are a pay grade 10. So, but they're on biweekly, so you, you've got people lower than pay grade 12 in both situations. Some are weekly, some are biweekly, but they're lo, lower than a pay grade 12.
And that's noted. I mean, I, that is noted, so everybody needs to know. We, even though we're talking about those weekly employees, there are some biweekly employees that would.
Absolutely.
You can make the same argument, so that, that, let that be noted. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Thank you, Angelica. I wanna go back a little bit to get a better understanding of payroll, okay, and how it's done. For an example, and I'm using my, my calendar to kinda help me. The week, let's say, the week of the 18th of June. Okay, let me take that back. First of all, is there like a timesheet, a time, um, sheet that says payroll for the week of the first or second week has to be completed by so-and-so date in order to cash the check?
Yes.
Okay, so, all the employees have a, a payroll sheet that tells them, if you wanna get paid on Friday, the week of the 11th and the 16th has to be submitted by Friday, 5:00 PM, so the check can be cashed the 23rd?
I'm not.
Is that how it works?
Well, we leave that up to the departments. I mean, typically.
No, 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 no. Hold, hold on, 'cause I'm trying to help you out, and I'm trying to understand at the same time. I work the week of the eight, let's say, um, payrolls usually starts like on a Sunday. I don't know about here.
Saturday.
On Saturday?
Yes.
Okay, so, the payroll from Saturday, which is, I'm gonna use June 17th, okay? Um, and it's gonna go all the way up to the 23rd? Or is it the 24th when the supervisor has to approve the time? When, when does a supervisor approve the time? If it goes from Saturday to 24, 17 to the 24th, when would the supervisor approve that time?
Um, the timekeepers are supposed to enter the time in the system by that Monday.
By the Monday?
By that Monday.
Okay.
Because they process payroll on Tuesday.
Because payroll's processed on a Tuesday, and then they get it on Friday?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay. So, that's what I wanted to understand. So, let's say that if they're supposed to process it, the super, or the timekeeper, supposed to approve it by Tuesday, is that correct? Or by Friday?
There's, I don't know, it's, uh, from a departmental standpoint, when they actually approve the time for employees. I mean, I would imagine whenever that employee shift ends that Friday, they do whatever they do from a department standpoint to validate the hours that that employee worked for the week. But from, from a processing standpoint, which is really all I can speak to, the time, it has to be entered in the time card system by that Monday.
Okay. Now, let me, and, and there's where, it's not you, okay, it's not your finance. That's where I, I have a, a little concern. And here's why I'm saying that. Whoever's the timekeeper should have had that completed and ready to go, and has, should verify that time by that Tuesday. That's what I'm asking. I'm asking, because on Tuesday or on that Friday, so Tuesday you can cut the check. Am I correct?
Tuesday, we process the payroll to determine the amounts of the checks. Wednesday, we submit that, those payments to the bank, so that by Friday, the checks can be in the employees' bank accounts.
Okay. And where I have a concern is whoever's doing the approval, it seems to me that, um, they're not getting it, for whatever reason, approving in a timely matter if you have to later write a check personally. And, and that is not finance's, um, fault, let's say it that way. The approving person should make that their priority. And I don't know who they are. I just say supervisor, because for us, it's a supervisor. For an example, where I work, okay? I have to submit my payroll no later than Monday, 3 o'clock. My supervisor has to have it approved no later than Wednesday or Tuesday by 5:00 PM Eastern, 5:05 PM. Or else, I don't get a paycheck under the new system. If my supervisor doesn't approve it, I don't get a written check. I have to wait to the following pay period to get my money that wasn't approved. So, that concerns me if that occurs with the new system. I'm not talking now about how the employees, if they should get extra money or not get extra money. What I'm concerned is if I'm hearing it correct, the new process, the way it's going to be handled, regardless if it's weekly or biweekly, if that timekeeper doesn't prove it on time, that person is going to have to wait until the next pay period. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Because that's what occurs now where I work, and that's a big problem.
And, and in our case, we are very sensitive, and, and we're not, I, it doesn't happen. I don't know that it happens every pay period, but, but it happens. Um, and, um, and when, and when it happens, we, we figure out a way to get the person paid, because we understand low wages.
Well, I, I'm not going looking for any what hasn't been done or wasn't. I'm just trying to understand, and I want the employees to understand it like we are understanding it. Um, that the new process, whoever is the timekeeper, has to make sure that that is completed in the time manner that it's expected. Because if I understand the new process, if they don't, for whatever reason, complete it, that employee is going to be without one, two, a week, or whatever pay, and there's nothing. I don't care how much you wanna try, based on what I'm hearing, for be, for them to be constipated until that time period to get their money. They're gonna have to wait the whole time and deal with it as ever they can, because that happens where I'm at.
Well.
With the new system. So, that, where I'm going with that is, and that's not putting blame on anybody or anything. Where I'm going with that is that we need to look at who those timekeepers are going to be, and we need to express to them that that should be their priority on that due date.
Well, I will say, um, part of the, um, part of the conversion process, there is a group that we've identified, the various timekeepers from the, uh, various departments, and they're what we call our change champions. Um, the vendor, um, has, uh, as a part of the conversion process, we're going through this, um, this change management process. And so, um, we've had meetings, um, already with the, the timekeepers from various departments, and, um, really just sort of try, really trying to figure out like their processes, and so, it's an ongoing thing. Um, so, we do have regular communication, um, as part of the, the change process for this conversion with the timekeepers from the various departments. And so, um, I think the next meeting, um, we're looking to do the time, um, card system. I think, I think it's scheduled, it's gonna be scheduled for next week. I think it was scheduled for today, actually. Um, but because of tonight and the presentation, we wanted to sort of put that on hold.
Now, let me ask you another question. Um, when you finish this presentation, 'cause I didn't skip around and look at it, are some of the options that we brought up in discussion last Tuesday, we're gonna go ahead and discuss some of those options, so that we can determine what would be the best fit? Okay.
Yeah.
That's why I wanna make sure. But I wanna make sure from my side concern. I know, 'cause it's happened to me. It was only a couple of days that I didn't get paid, and I was okay, because I had some money saved up. But that worries me, um, in the sense that whoever those timekeepers are with this new system, they really gotta be on the J O B.
Well, and.
And have an alternate person if they get sick or go on vacation or something to handle that.
We are serious about people getting paid, and that, that is not an, an issue for me, because that is a serious matter. And I don't want anyone to think, any employee, to think that we're going to have a system where, like what you have, where you work, that we make them wait two weeks to get a check.
Mm-hmm.
That just ain't gonna happen.
Okay, I just wanna make sure of that.
Those listening, the 2,700, 3,000 employees listening, we don't intend for that to happen.
Okay.
Where they gotta go two weeks without a check. It just ain't gonna happen.
Okay.
And I just wanna say too, as we go on to other counselors, there's the real impression being left. We got some bad bookkeepers working for us. So, if anybody has defense, I'm, I'm, it's, it's council's talking, there's head shaking going on over here, and you all may know why that's happening, but it's not being explained to this group or to the citizens that are watching. And so, there's a real impression that we got a bunch of incompetent bookkeepers who aren't getting time in, and it's, it's hurting people.
And that is not the case.
Somebody better explain. That's just my impression of what's being said. Somebody needs to explain what's going on.
And I use the word ain't intentionally to make a point, you know, but, but, you know, as I said, you know, I've not, if, if employees were not getting paid, I can't tell you when they've had to call me about a special check, because if it happens, I'm gonna get a call. You know, it happens, but it's not on a regular basis. And so.
She said regular basis, so somebody needs to explain it.
Well.
No, you.
What I'm saying is, I'm not saying of what's happening today. That's not my point at all. My point is what can happen in the future. I wanted to ensure that we are careful with the future, not today. I'm not saying anything about the bookkeeping, because you're just giving us what you have an assumption of what it is, because we just caught you off guard in asking you these numbers that you don't have. So, please don't think that I'm saying the bookkeepers today. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying I wanna make sure when the new system comes in place, we have things, and those, um, timekeepers, supervisors, whatever you wanna call them, know that this is very important, because there's no turning back.
It's going for. Can I, I, I would like to clarify, because I'm, uh, that was just one particular instance as far as an employee and what, uh, not receiving their paycheck. There are, there are several reasons. Um, it could be in that an employee's account was closed, and they didn't notify payroll or HR that they changed their account, or, um, you know, that their accounts were frozen or whatever, and we've had to issue a manual check to that employee. My whole purpose in saying that, though, is that with the two-week period, it gives times for adjustments. It gives time to, to the timekeeper. It gives time to the employee to change their, um, information. I mean, that's one of the capabilities of the system, is that as an employee, I'll be able to go in and update my bank account information, my address information, and, um, that would eliminate some of the manual checks that we issue.
All right, we've got Counselor Garrett.
I guess I've got a pretty simple question, 'cause I think we're going off on a tangent, talking about the timekeeping right now. Do we control when we, when this software goes into effect and when this payroll system goes into effect?
Well, it's in your presentation, but there is a time schedule that we've worked out with the vendor, and it was worked out some time ago. And with money, you can do anything. If you want to delay it until next year, I mean, it comes.
Well, I'm not, my idea is not necessarily to delay. If we control it and we control our manual pay system, why don't we start the system a week early, so their, their time's building up, and still issue a manual paycheck, so that by the time the paycheck gets issued from this new system, it's the same time they would've gotten their other paycheck? You understand what I'm saying? If we start the system early and we still issue a manual paycheck after that week that the system has gone into effect, then that week is passed by the week that they would be in arrears, and they're gonna miss out on a paycheck. We issue the manual paycheck under our old system, and basically, the system would just kinda, basically, they'd be on the same system they were before. You understand what I'm saying, Angelica?
I get what you're saying, but, um, that isn't exactly the case, uh, because the, um, conversion process that we're doing for the weekly employees will put them on a biweekly pay cycle instead of a weekly. And we are, we will run parallel payrolls between the old system and the new system. That actually will take place, um, in the month of September. August is, is really the last, um, it's really pushing up against the deadline for us to be able to process this change and convert that data into the new system, and then run those, uh, parallel payrolls between the old system and the new system, so that we can do those, um, types of comparisons.
Okay.
But we'll still function under the old system until we cut over and go live in the new system, which is slated in, uh, for October.
Okay, I'd just like to know what the cost would be if we keep both systems in place, so that there's an overlap, where we can get the paychecks to align, so nobody's missing a paycheck?
Well, we're not cutting over to the new system in August. That's not what we're doing. We won't actually go live in the new system until October. The conversion process from the weekly pay cycles to biweekly pay cycles has to happen before we transfer the data from the old system to the new system. That'll, that's what we're doing in August.
Well, if there's a way we can make it where it lines up, just, if there's some sort of cost involved, I'd like to know that. sort of cost involved, I'd like to know that. And who is the vendor for this?
CGI.
CGI?
Mm-hmm.
And if we could get, I'd like to know just if we want them to make those changes, or if we don't like the system at all, which that may not be the decision, but just what our, what our outs are.
Well, I mean, we committed to a 10-year contract. We've already invested almost $2 million for the implementation of these three systems, and that 10-year commitment does amount to $6.95 million. But that is actually some, one of the later referrals, if you, because we did, I did reach out to the vendor to get a response as far as the cost, and it's more than them just pulling a number out of the air. There's an approval process, they have to determine the scope of the change, the resources that's required, they have other projects that are slated to begin after hours, and so, you know, it, I mean, it may work out to, if there was a delay, that it may not even be at our, you know, whatever we decide to go live. It may be some later date, and we, you know, pay for that, because there may be other clients that, you know, that be focused on. We have dedicated resources that come here every other week for this project. We have a project manager that's designated for us, that's dedicated to us, as well as project H R M experts that are also dedicated to us for our project, that will move on to other projects. Eventually, we'll transition from the project team to the operational team once we're in a steady state. So, and that's a little confusing, I know I'm just giving you too much information here, but, you know, so we'll, for the finance and I T folks, we're kind of working with two teams still. We're working with the project team for the H R M conversion, and we're also working with the operational team for the systems that we've already converted, so.
Okay. Well, just, my only question to them is, can they stagger the system? And I know you don't, you can't answer that necessarily off the top of your head, but I just want to, can we stagger the system so that the weekend arrears basically takes place while they're already getting paid under the old system? So that everything kind of stays the same?
Yes, and Forrest may know, I guess.
I'm just going to, I'm not going to speak to anything except for how the conversion process works. So, basically, what you do is you get the current system into the format that you want the new system to be. So, they don't actually get paid out of the new system at all until after October, October. So, what we're trying to do is you move from the biweekly and the weekly to everyone biweekly, and the biweekly to arrears. You get that in the old system. The old system continues to produce checks. And the testing period is while we're paying out of the old system, biweekly, everyone's biweekly, so we're paying out of the old system monthly, monthly, you know, every month. Then you run them parallel. So, you don't actually do anything in the new system until you're satisfied that they match. So, once the old system and new system are matching biweekly paychecks, then at that point, you start printing checks out of the new system. So, you never at any point print out of both systems. You just at some point say, okay, the old system and new system match, we've tested three times, four times, everyone to get paid, and then you just quit paying out of the old system and start into the new system. And that's why you can't kind of overlap them. Because when you cut off the old system instantly that day, that data's transferred to, quote, "the new system," and then that just moves forward. So, there's absolutely no overlapping time for the old system and new system, if that kind of explains. So, the cutover date really means you freeze the old system in place, move everything to the new system, and then you just march on with the new system as if it was the old system.
Okay.
All right, let's see, we have Counselor Thomas, and it looks like, you know, we do have other referrals, there may be an answer in there somewhere.
Yeah.
Okay, Counselor Thomas.
I'd like to look at referral two, excuse me, the, the amounts that you have listed there of the cost for increasing the bonus, well, let me back up. In referral one, you said we have 886 full-time employees, grade 12 and below. In referral two, the figures that you have given to us are those figures for all employees, grade seven through whatever the top grade is?
Yes, ma'am.
So, the fact that it only costs 100, oh, let me back up another, another bit. You said we had 384 employees who are paid weekly, grade 12 and lower. That was the figure on referral number one.
Yes.
Are there, are there employees above grade 12 that are paid weekly?
Yes.
Okay, so that as we look at the figures then in referral two, the fact that the weekly employee bonus, if we increase that, is only $131,000 as compared to $904,000 for the biweekly, is because we have so many more biweekly above grade 12?
No, this is all grades, and the biweekly employees, we have 82% of our workforce are currently paid biweekly. Only 18, about 18% of our workforce is paid every week.
I guess I'm trying to look at the $775,000 difference in those two, in the weekly and the biweekly, and trying to get a little better feel about why there's that large a difference between the weekly and the biweekly. And I was thinking that perhaps it was because there were many more people, or there were many more above grade 12, or, I mean, it just seems like there's a lot of, that's a lot of money.
I mean, there are many more people. The total number of weekly paid employees, which are all grades, are, on our current workforce report, was 449 people that are paid every week. That amounts to about 18% of our full-time employees, so 82%.
About 450 that are paid weekly total?
449. 449 employees.
Okay.
That are full-time or paid every week. Now, that doesn't account for the part-time people.
Right, right.
That's just full-time people. Out of 2,461 full-time employees.
So, it would cost $131,000 to give those 449 weekly paid employees an additional $20?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and then it will cost us 904,000, 905,000 to give biweekly, and did you, did you tell me the number of biweekly?
I did not, I just gave you what the total was. But I can do that math really quickly. The total was 2,461 biweekly employees.
2,461 biweekly, and that drives the 904,000, 905,000, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, that's what I, that's what I was trying to come up with.
Angelica, two quick questions on a sidebar here. First of all, the 131,000 includes how many employees, the 449?
Forty-nine, yes, ma'am.
Forty-nine, okay. And then the other is, we're just talking about C C G employees, this doesn't include Waterworks, isn't that right?
That's correct.
Okay, yeah, right, that's just, wanted to make sure. Okay, all right. Motor on, referral two, as are all the questions right now.
Okay. For referral number three, was what if we moved the H R M project go-live date from October to December? Kind of already talked about this a little bit, but like I said, I did reach out to the vendor, and they have advised that, you know, there is a financial impact with changing the go-live date from October to December. Additional meetings is required internally, as well as with the C C G staff to determine the scope of the change. There's an actual approval process. When we submit a change order for the project, it's an official document for the project that goes through an approval, an approval process internally with the vendor. And so, before they facilitate that, there's, we need to meet to determine what the cost would be. No questions?
Have there any questions on that one?
I don't see it. Can you help me, Tisha? And I will say one other thing with us being, with us delaying conversion, you know, we've already converted two of our systems, the budgeting system and the financial system. And.
Okay.
With us delaying it, that just delays the ability for the, all three systems to talk to each other. It's an integrated solution, so the applications are able to talk to each other. There's information that we can pull out of the H R system for the budgeting side of the house, information that we would pull out of the H R system for the financial side of the house and vice versa, so just wanted to throw that little tidbit out there.
Ma'am, Finance Director, I was waiting until you finished, but are we, is it correct that the consolidated government has already purchased this software, put a down payment on it?
Yes.
Did you say a minute ago, like $2 million down payment?
Almost $2 million, not necessarily for a down payment, but that's to the cost of implementing the project, implementing the systems.
And that was all, the contract worked out for these dates that you're talking about here?
Yes, yes, sir, for an October go-live date for the H R component. So far, we've adhered to the contract with the budgeting component and the financial component.
Okay.
You're good?
Thank you.
Counselor Member Huff, please.
Is there a method in which we could somehow write the checks to make the employees whole and still be on time with the conversion?
What do you mean? I guess I'm not understanding the question.
You're saying that what's getting ready to take place will be in August?
Yes.
And conversion will take place in October?
The, the new system will go live in October.
Live in October.
The conversion will take place in August.
Okay, so without us receiving a penalty for not being ready to go live in October, is there some way right now that we could look at manually writing the checks and still being on time to go live in October?
I guess I'm not understanding, what checks are we writing?
To give them 40 hours versus 20?
Well, I mean, the cost.
On the numbers, on the numbers you just gave us.
I mean, that wouldn't be a manual process. If council decided to give the employees the additional 20 hours, we just make that a part of the bonus.
Okay, thank you.
So, the fourth referral was to run a bonus pay scenario for a grade seven employee, and the chart that I've included, I wanted to look at it, and I don't, I'm hoping this is what you were requesting, from a holistic standpoint, not just the tax effect, but we did take a grade seven employee, a real live grade seven employee that currently works for the city, and determined what the net pay would be with the bonus added on the Fourth of August for an individual that's single with no withholding allowances, for an individual that's single with two withholding allowances, to, you know, account for any, any children, or a married individual with two allowances, which is typically for the individual and the spouse. And so, the net, the additional net pay because of the bonus for these, this particular grade seven weekly paid employee would be an additional $152.43 if you are a single individual with zero withholding allowances. For a single individual with two withholding allowances, not much difference, it's actually two cents less, it's $152.41, and for a married individual with two allowances, it's $163.19.
Let's see, Counselor Huff.
Are we taking taxes out of the bonus?
Yes, sir, we have to tax it.
At what rate and why?
Well, and that was one of the options that was presented to council last week, was to not pay the bonus out on August the 11th, and if we get a concurrence from council, we intend to pay the bonus out early, so there would be some tax savings to the employees. For the weekly employees, it'll be paid out on August the 4th. For the biweekly employees, it'll be paid out on July 28th.
So, if it, if it's a bonus, why would it be taxed the same as salary? Because it, if, that's my whole point of the 40 hours. I feel like it's all, should be in salary, the reason they should get their money, because they're paying taxes.
Well, I mean, we have to, the IRS says that a bonus is a supplemental wage. Anytime we pay wages, we have to withhold taxes.
At the same rate?
It's more advantageous for us and for the, well, for the employee that we pay the bonus as part of their proceeding paycheck, as opposed to paying it out separately, where there's more taxes taken for all people. Because if we pay it out on August the 11th as a sep, and run it as a separate check, there's going to be more taxes, because we can only apply the flat 25% tax rate. The system will not allow us to tax it any other way. That's the system.
Right, but I'm saying, if you pay it out as salary, it wouldn't have to be a bonus, they're paying the same rate.
A bonus is unearned money.
Unearned, right, right, that's exactly what I'm saying.
Yeah, we can't hear you.
That's what, now you're on my page.
Counselor, the bonus is unearned money, so it's, you can't treat it the same as you would for a salary that the employee earns. So, the taxes has to be different.
Okay, okay, that's where I am, but that's.
Right, that's if we pay it out.
That's what I'm saying, it's different. So, if we paid it out as salary ahead of time and taxed it as salary.
Right, that's one of the options that we could do, is pay it out ahead of time and tax it with their regular paycheck.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead. Nothing further.
So, referral number five is, what about advancing 20 additional hours, and this is an advance of pay, to employees and withhold vacation days as collateral, or give an advance pay of some sort to weekly employees only? So, you know, we've consulted with the city attorney's office, and pay advances as suggested may create equal protection concerns. The suggestion is not advised, because it could subject the city to potential litigation. And also, pay advances of any kind is just difficult to manage administratively. We don't have a really robust system here that we're working with, with the mainframe being as old and antiquated as it is, so it's a very manual process to try to keep track of.
All right, we've got Counsel, yes, Counselor Barnes.
Clifton, explain to me why, now, not even including, I'm talking about jobs I've worked on in advance, because I, you know, I told you, many times I had to go to payday loans and all this other kind of stuff. So, I've gotten cash advance on jobs. What is precluding this government from doing that?
The only thing we would caution you about is treating two similarly situated groups of employees differently. That brings up an equal protection argument. Now, if you want to pay the advance to the weekly employees only, we can defend it, that's your decision, but it still may be challenged on an equal protection basis.
Okay, so in other words, we can do an advance pay, go through all the legal issues you just told me, it's not impossible.
It's not impossible, but it may be challenged.
Okay, let me, let me just cut through the chase on this here. Saturday, I met with many of the, some of the employees here for over two hours at my office. Now, basically, what I have been hearing here, mayor and city manager and fellow councilors, is that what this administration wants to do, I've been hearing it has really good and glorious things for this administration. However, the unintended consequences of what this government is doing, and I don't want to hear a sound, I just want to hear a raise of hands, how many of our. How many of our good employees are impacted negatively by this decision that this government is making? Just so by show of hands, my fellow counselors and mayor, look at this here. That's sad, that a decision that this administration is making, which is all I've heard is good, 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 good. But this administration is having such a negative impact on our employees that we have not given a raise in eight years, but have worked diligently. We decided to make this change without conferring initially or letting the employees even know or asking them what impact it would have on them. And in the over two hours of conversations, that is something that I learned that I did not know. And just correct me, it could be just the fact that I misunderstood. But I heard for the weekly employees that when we pay them, we don't know really whether they're going to finish work. Is that what it is, we're paying them?
That's the biweekly employees.
Pardon?
That is the biweekly employees.
That's the biweekly employees.
The weekly employees are already on a lag.
Right, they already got 40 hours. Okay, that's what I learned Saturday.
Yes.
And, and because we are making the change that is negatively impacting our employees, we need to make them whole. Because we have not only individuals, we have families that are negatively impacted by this here. So we need to come up with a solution. Now, this is what I've heard, just bear with me while I work with this technology here, which are the solutions that they came up with. The solutions that they came up with first suggested is don't change the current system. If you're going to change it, then you change it when it doesn't affect them. Make it retroactive so a grandfather, it does not affect them, it will affect incoming employees. What Counselor Baker said was in fact the truth. And I'd like to tell you personally that I had a number of people said, they, they wanted you to know that it was not anything derogatory that you said. It was educational, that this is a life change, a life change that we're causing these employees to do. And it's causing deleterious effects on them, not on this government. We're making the change, but it's affected them. The other suggestion, pay the bonus as a 40 hours when the change is made and let the city rightfully absorb the cost. We're making the change, we absorb the cost. Why should they suffer for a decision that we're making? Especially when we didn't even give them the courtesy or the respect to let them know in advance what we were going to do. That's disrespect, I feel. Greatly disrespectful. Not saying that anything's done deliberately to hurt. It's just that sometimes people don't think. You just don't think about the impact, the unintended consequences of a decision. The other thing is, I wanted to clarify, is now these are, this is a decision this council has to make. You saw, could you raise your hands again? The ones who are negatively impacted by the decision that this government has made. Thank you so much, I appreciate it. So we need to make them whole. These are our employees that work every day. We need to make them whole and not put them in a situation where they're going to suffer financially, them and their families. So now it's going to be up to this council for us to decide how we do this here. Because it should not happen. This is what we need to be deciding on. All of this here, this PowerPoint presentation, appreciate all the information. Not pointing any fingers and accusing anyone of anything. When you, when you distill it down to the bare nitty gritty, we need to make our employees whole that they do not suffer for this change that we are doing. The question is, how do we do that? I'm for giving them the 40 hours. That's what, that's my, what my motion is. If I can get a second, I appreciate it. Thank you, Counselor Gary.
Is that a, for 40 hours for weekly or for, for biweekly?
That's exactly right.
Okay. That's a million dollars.
Well, guess what? We made the decision there.
Okay, all right. And, and look, by the way, Pops, the administration proposed this with a bonus. Council voted on it. So it's not just the administration-
I said unintended consequences.
I understand, I just wanted to make clear that this is not the administration versus council. The council proposed that because of this change, we give a bonus, 20-hour bonus, and council approved it. Now, if we want to revisit it because we want to do better, we can always do that. We just have to find the million dollars, which is fine. We got a million dollars, may go below 60, but-
Council voted on the change not knowing of the impact to the employees. We're not involved in that type of things as your, as the government. We are part-time counselors. So mayor, don't shove that on. I take issue with that.
Sure, I'm sure you do.
You better believe I do.
That also, it was announced in the mayor's budget letter in April and discussed at length in the budget hearings.
Can we get on with the-
Sure, I just want to make sure we all got the facts straight.
I understand what you're saying, I understand what you're saying.
I know. All right, just so long as the facts are straight. We've got a motion in a second to allow all employees a 40-hour bonus at a cost of approximately a million dollars. Source to be determined later. Let's see, we've got Counselor Woodson for a discussion.
I have a question. This million dollars, where's it going to come from?
Well, the only place it can come from is fund balance, obviously.
All right, so we would take the million dollars from fund balance to make it whole? And I just want to make sure, this is going to be both weekly and biweekly employees, correct?
And I think the number she gave last week was 785,000 or so would come from the general fund.
That's correct.
Fund balance. And roughly 385,000 would come from other funds.
Yeah, so the majority of that is in the general fund. It'd be about 785,000 of this million that would come from the general fund. Currently, I just want to just point out to council that, you know, when we approve the budget, initially it was proposed at 61.45 days and final budget approval was 60.69 days. The value of that .69 is $282,969. So that's the above 60-day amount.
So this takes us below 60 days and we would have to pay it before the taxes come in because we've got this tax assessment issue where we're not going to be receiving tax revenue. Can we borrow funds from a bank to pay the bonuses?
We are looking into that. We've reached out to the banks-
So we'll have to borrow funds and pay interest in order to give the bonus?
Yes, we've reached, we've reached out to the banks about a possible tax anticipation note for this year.
Tax anticipation note?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Baker?
I don't, I mean, I understand Pop's request and I don't mind entertaining that. I'm not prepared to vote on that today. I would like a little more time to consider the impact and perhaps get some information on that. I, I really don't know where that type of money really would come from. You know, part of that, it tells you what a few extra days of fund balance will do for you. It helps you get through situations like this. It gives you options when your, when your fund balance is where ours is. It eliminates your options in a hurry. So that's what concerns me and that's why, well, y'all know how sensitive an issue fund balance is to me. And this is exactly why. It's not that things are, you know, may happen, they are going to happen. And there's no substitute for extra fund balance to get you through the day. But here, we don't have it. So I really don't know how I would take a look at that additional, was it an additional 20 over and above the proposed 20? Is that-
Yeah, that's-
Is that, yeah, I'll just, yeah, I'm not prepared to vote on that today. If it's called, that's fine, I have no problem with that. I would not vote for it just because I don't have enough information. But Angela, is it, are there, is it not an option, or, and you might have to come back with this, to move to the new system? We've got to move to the new system. We understand that, I do. I don't have a problem with that. But is all our flexibility, it sort of goes with Counselor Davis, I think, was going to. Is all our flexibility gone as far as moving to the new system, but under our current payroll format? I mean, you're just saying that it doesn't exist, you can't do it?
I believe it-
You might could do it, might could do it for a while.
I believe it does not exist. I believe that option doesn't exist. I don't think we have the option to pay, I'll verify.
Yeah, I'm just asking, I'm just looking for options.
I believe we have the option to-
And we all know, we all know there may be a little bit of cost to this. That's not-
I mean, so there have to be some change. She was just reminding me of the issue that we have with paying the biweekly employees currently. We definitely know for sure we won't be able to do that in the system. But I'll check on, I don't believe that we'll be able to keep our payroll cycles as is with the new system. But I'll confirm that.
And as far as the, so the issue with, the issue with the weeklies is going to biweekly is that it really brings a difficulty in their budgeting, household budgeting issues. And I realize it's their responsibility, but, but I don't know that I want to place an additional burden on them because it's tough. It is, I understand that. And the issue with biweekly is going to the lag.
Right. And the lag has to most certainly take place because we can't enter time in the system ahead of time. Because now, for our biweekly people, we pay them biweekly. Time isn't necessarily entered for that individual. They're on a, they're a non-exempt salaried person.
Right.
But for the new system, we'll have to enter time.
For everybody.
For everybody.
And there are no defaults that you can default out of, out of time to?
I mean, there are some ways to make it easier. We could pre-fill, there's some pre-fill options that we could do, but we'd have to enter time for every person now, which we currently don't do.
Yeah. And it's tough, and please understand, it's tough on the bi-weeklies when you just step in and say, oh, we're just going to hold back a week. I mean, that's, you know, that's tough to get over. And tough for them to, to deal with. And you feel like the one, the 20 hours would do it. And, you know, I don't, it doesn't sound like council really feels like it does. So we're just trying to explore other options. But it's, and I said it's a little bit different. When we went through the pension plan reform, you know, we had to, we went back to withholding from their pensions and with the mayor's guidance, and she helped with some cost of living to deal with that. Healthcare, we did the same thing. We had to, you know, reform our healthcare system and we tried to do some things. But those had to be done. Those were going to sink the whole ship if we didn't fix those. And that was a mathematical certainty. And this is just a little bit, I see it's just a little bit different. It's something that needs to be done, but I don't know it rises to the level that we really want to place a hardship on the employees to do it. And that's what I'm struggling with.
Right.
If we can, and I didn't know if we could, but converting to the new system, that has to happen.
Right.
And I just don't know what our options are once we do that. Or as far as we talked about once before, even if it's doable to leave the weeklies and if those jobs are replaced, then bring them back on as biweekly. And I don't know if that creates a different level of pay or not for different people.
Well, I mean, administratively, I think that is absolutely, HR director said it's a nightmare. It is difficult for the employer, for the departments to, to manage a system of that type. But again, I really-
In terms of being able to manage what you're describing, Counselor Baker, in terms of having another system, which is what we're trying to get from now, all of the systems, the weekly system, the biweekly system, the monthly system. Because it is an administrative nightmare right now from an HR standpoint with 15 employees who do a torts amount of work in addition to the employees that are in the field that we talked about, the timekeepers. To be able to manage that, anytime you've got a human doing something, we're, we're, we're subject to error. And that's what we're trying to get from, the human error. And the least amount that humans can have to deal with it, the better off. So to say that we will have a system now, we'll convert to the new system, but then we'll leave the old system and allow it to migrate manually, that's next to, is, it would be a nightmare. And what you don't want to do is have employees, again, paid improperly. When I was supposed to get $500 this week, but then my check was 435. So we've got to figure out how to fix that because a human did it and we're working in a very manual system. What we're trying to do is make sure that when that employee works 40 hours for whatever amount of salary that has been agreed upon, that that's what's going to show up in that bank account for them. And that's what we want to assure. Not, and, and we know that the more human interaction that we can take out of that from whether the timekeeper got the time in time, whether the supervisor gave the time to the employee, whether the bank account is correct and still current, those kinds of things. You know, it helps eliminate so many of those problems. And to create now another side system, I think it's just inviting problems at another set of problems to deal with.
Side system, I'm just trying to take the same system onto the new platform.
And I believe in, on the new platform-
That was the only question.
I believe on the new platform, and I'll most certainly confirm this, but I believe from the sessions that we've had with the vendor, all the employees would have to be on the same pay cycle.
That's correct. In order to, they will all have to be on the same pay cycle, the same system.
Okay. Well, I'm just, it's hard to get a consensus from council, from listening to everybody talk. And, you know, where a million dollars is coming from, I don't know. So I'm afraid we're headed for a little bit of a logjam, but I'm just looking for options. But thank you.
All right. Let's see, we've got Counselor Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, looking at this company CGI, it, it just strikes me that they're quite capable of making the necessary adjustments or customizing their software. I just can't understand that, you know, the code writers here, the ones doing the software, why they can't do two structures or two setups where you could phase out individuals. I mean, it's basically hitting buttons in the long run. Once you have the software, if it's customized and it's done right, if you have a group you hit a button for, you have another group you hit a button for. I don't, I don't understand that. But ultimately, in looking at that, I mean, I'm not ready to make a decision tonight either. I, you know, if I vote against what's being proposed, that's, doesn't mean that I'm not for it. It just means that I came here tonight to, this is a work session. I came here to learn more. I came here to ask questions. I came here to hear from my colleagues and understand from the staff or the administration what, what we're dealing with. And at the same time, others can hear as well. I'd still like to hear from others. I'm not ready to, to pull the trigger on, on a matter that would have, you know, consequences to this government. Although I am looking, I'm really looking at the opportunity to save the taxpayers a lot of money, as much as $1.6 million. And just saving money if we were to able to customize a, a system. Again, I just can't understand why a company like CIG couldn't do that, even if it was a cost to this government. It would be far less than what we're having to do to convert just because we're trying to say it's simpler. We've been doing it for a long time. And look, I respect and appreciate every one of our employees at all levels and all departments. But we've been doing it for such a long time. I mean, I haven't heard any complaints over time, even though it may be difficult to do. But, you know, I just can't believe that there's, you know, with modern technology, that we're not able to solve this problem, especially with a company like CIG. So I'm still looking at that closely. I'd like to hear if there's any other options tonight that's on, on the table. Any of my other colleagues have some options. And personally, I'd like to have the opportunity to digest all this and continue to, look, it's still June. So I think we still have time to work through this. So with that being said, you know, again, I'm not ready to make a, personally make a decision tonight because I'm, I'm gathering a lot of information here. And I still, I have some questions that I've been asking tonight that I want to get some answers to. And it's probably going to be in a week or two before I get them. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I'd like for the IT director to speak to the ability to customize the system. Certainly, you can do anything with- Certainly, you can do anything with money and that can be done at a cost and I want him to kind of touch on that.
Yeah, Councilor Davis, I was just gonna, and again, I don't have numbers, that numbers would have to come from finance. But in any system, including this system, we can, you can customize, we can customize, we can have it customized to do really anything that you want. The, the extra expense comes with every upgrade. So when you have a standard system, when you upgrade it and you had, and if you've customized it, like CCG, we have a side customization. When the system's upgraded, we have to also pay to upgrade anything that we customized before. Whereas now upgrades are automatic. So that's like an intangible cost to give for each upgrade. If that kind of makes sense. In other words, any customization you do, it's good until the next upgrade. But then when we keep the system current, you run a patch on it, you run another security fix, now you have to pay the vendor to run that same thing on all your customizations. And we don't really have a cost, hard cost on that. I know that finance can get a cost on this customization. But what I can't predict is as we do each upgrade over the next 10 years, what is that added cost over time to our customization? And that's really where the software, being like a, when we use a baseline system, in other words, every time you customize, you patch, it's all included in our cost. If we customize it, which we can do, that's an additional cost, each patch, each upgrade, each security fix. And then of course, we can't predict in the future how many security fixes there may be because of threats that are outside our control, North Korea, Russia, China. So that's kind of why we try to stay away from customization. It's not that you can't do it or this vendor can't do it, it's just the recurring unpredictable cost of those customizations.
Well, and, and I agree with you, it's probably gonna take a cost because you're gonna have to have somebody to write the, to write the code on it, but you're still dealing with the same format. You're still dealing with the same foundations here. So I don't, you know, security is security, it's already there. I don't think, whether you have one or the other, you know, I, I mentioned earlier that you would phase out and eventually over time go into the system where you're doing biweekly. I just don't see that being complicated, I just see it being an additional cost. You're already upgrading, upgrading's not the issue. You're gonna be up, you're upgrading all these other departments and all. We're talking about one segment. We're talking about payroll. So, you know, that's a code. And, you know, you got the right people, they can work wonders when it comes to software. Security's already there, security should be across the board. I don't see why you just implement a weekly and a biweekly pay structure, why that North Koreans are potentially gonna hack you. I don't see that happening. But, you know, yeah, it would be a cost, but the cost versus what we're having to do to make these changes, it's gonna be far less.
Well, that's the part.
You can do the math, it's far, it's gonna be far less.
That's the part I can't predict. In other words, I can't stand here and say that over the next 10 years that the cost of keeping the software current customized won't cost more in the end than a million dollars.
Well, it customizes one time thing.
No, no, sir.
I, I, I disagree with you there. I don't understand, you're, you're doing it one time and eventually you're gonna phase out. I don't, I don't up, see upgrading and upgrading and up, are we gonna upgrade and upgrade and not keep upgrading?
Every time you get a Windows update on your computer, if you have customized your computer, it'll do thanks to your customization.
We're doing a 10-year agreement for a package.
But they keep the package updated. So they update every so many quarters, they run an update, a patch to the system.
That we've already paid for, we're contracted under it.
Correct.
Right. So this one little part we're talking about.
Won't ever get upgraded and if it becomes incompatible, which it will each time it's up, system's upgraded, you'll have to pay to get that code rewritten for the new upgrade.
Well, I. It just seems to me that a company like CIG is quite capable of making this happen and it shouldn't cost the type of money that we're talking about.
Right, and I, they can do it, and like I said, I have no idea of the cost. It's just that I can't predict it. That would have to be something we'd have to ask the vendor. I was really speaking of the fact they can customize, if you customize every quarter or every six months when they run out a patch to the system, then you're gonna have to pay again. Now, what the cost is, I don't.
And again, in, in conclusion, what was just put on the table is over $2 million.
Yes, sir.
$2 million to fix this, just to move ahead. So, I mean, I'm trying to find a good solution here and it seems to me like it's quite capable of hap, I mean, they can make it happen. I don't understand why they couldn't.
I'm, I'm certain that they can reprogram the system or program anything into the system that you'd like. What I'm not certain of is the cost.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, we have Councilor Thomas.
I have two questions. First of all, several of the councilors have indicated that they are not prepared tonight to vote on this motion. If we don't take action tonight, what is the drop dead date? When would we have to vote on it in order for you, if the vote is to increase the 20 hours to 40 hours, when would you have to have that decision in order to do that?
Technically for us, it'd have to be by the next meeting, which would be the July 11th meeting. The July 25th meeting, we would have already processed payroll for that Friday. So, before the council meeting. So we would need to know by July 11th.
So if we don't make a decision tonight, we will have to make a decision on the 11th?
Yes, sir.
Okay. My other question is, we are currently three days before the end of this fiscal year. And my question is, what, what does our fund balance for FY, our ending fund balance for FY '17 look like as compared to what we have, what we were looking for in '18? Does that make sense? How are we, how are we doing?
Well, you know, we always start the fiscal year assuming that we meet all of our revenue projections and that everyone stays in budget. We, we always begin the fiscal year predicting that we'll end up with 60 days. But unfortunately, Councilor Thomas, at this particular moment in time, I really can't give you where we at, where we are from a realistic fund balance perspective because being that we're in the month of June, yes, our fiscal year ends June 30th, but all expenditures that occurred or all services that were received in FY '17 will be applied back to FY '17, even if that happens in July. We process FY '17 payments and charge those expenses to FY '17 throughout the month of July. And any revenues that count towards FY '17, those are also recorded back to FY '17. So at this particular moment in time, I just don't, I don't know where we are from a fund balance perspective. I can't really give you that.
Well, let me ask you this. Given your experience in the finance department and your professional knowledge and so forth, do you have any, I don't know the, the word I want to use, of how we're gonna end up? Are we going to be in the red or in the, you know, are?
Well, I am hopefully.
And I'm, I'm not going to hold you to this because I know that there are bills that have to still come in and all that. But I know that you have worked in the finance department for a number of years and that you are very capable at what you do. And I'm just asking you for a professional guess.
Well, you know, I am, oh, you.
No, so I, you know, I think it's okay as long as the understanding is there that, you know, if you were going to make a guess, as long as the understanding with this body and with the public is that, you know, there, there are things out there that we don't know about yet. And, and you won't know about those things until over in July and they'll carry on through July. But if you, and so any projection that you make would be just that. And it could vary five days this way, five days the other way.
I'm not asking, I'm not asking you to tell me what the, what the ending balance is gonna be. I'm asking you to tell me what is, how does it look in your professional opinion? We're looking for a million dollars, okay? And so what, what does it look like in your professional opinion and?
Well, I will say, I'm gonna give the May report tonight. And just in the general fund, year to date, in revenue, we've collected about 130 million in revenue. And our expenditures as of the end of May was 128 million. So we do have about 2 million more in revenue that we've collected than we've expended as of the end of May.
And I know that as we go forward into the next fiscal year, we always sort of count that, count that in, that, that we are gonna have a little bit to carry over.
Right.
And, and so I guess my question is, how does that 2 million dollars sort of compare to where we need to be? Is, is there any flexibility there? Is there any, you know? And if you don't want to answer, just say you'd rather not. I understand that, I understand that.
Comfortable giving an answer to that specifically. And we do, when we project the fund balance days for the upcoming year, like for FY '18, we do predict out where we'll end up from a revenue perspective and where we'll end up from an expenditure perspective and, and an estimate about how much will roll up into fund balance so that we can do the calculations for the, for the upcoming year when we're in the budget process. So I just aren't really comfortable giving out those types of figures, except what I've just said as of the end of May.
Okay, that's, that's fair. Thank you.
Okay. We have Councilor Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm gonna jump on that train too about being reluctant to vote on it this evening. And in fact, if we're, if we're, if it goes to a vote this evening, I'll vote against it, even though I find it frankly just not an acceptable option to negatively impact, not just the folks here, but all of our employees. And what scares me is that we're, we're slowly winding our way down a path that's gonna lead to one of two options. And, and that's either take a pretty good lick on our fund balance or put some more burden on our employees to, to help us with this financial issue that we're having. And that's what it is. We're making an upgrade, which we do frequently because we need to for the long-term success of this government, to be able to continue to serve the citizens. But to me right now, that's just unacceptable, what I've heard around this table. And I think the reason we're hearing all these very creative ideas about the, the mainframe and the software and all that is because this group is, I think they're like me, I can't remember a time I've been more frustrated with, with narrowing it down to just two options that both stink frankly to me. So, but if, so I would like to see this delayed for one more week. And I'd, I'd like some additional figures and I don't want anybody throwing anything at me because I'm not recommending this or, or, or offering it up as, as an alternative. But I would be interested to know what the total dollar obligation would be if everybody got the 40 hours excluding department heads. And I'd also like to know what it would be excluding people 18 and above, not 18 years of age, eight, level 18 and up. I'd also like to know what the projected sustainability of our cash flow is with the change in the tax receipts coming in. And, and I'd like to see that so that I can, I can see whatever the financial burden is for correcting this, how, how close are we gonna be to avoiding having any short-term credit being issued?
Okay.
And I just, I just want to say, I, I, this group, I've never been prouder to be part of this group. And I know that sounds weird because there's some folks really mad at us. But everybody up here has been racking their brains and trying to use really sort of a, a limited amount of resources to try to come up with technological ways, accounting ways, even making loans. I mean, we're desperate to try to solve this issue. We recognize that we have to do this for the city. And, and I have been, folks know me, I've been extremely hardline on the finance side and have really not voted to dip into the, to the fund balance. But I, but I gotta say at this particular point, if nothing changes, if we can't find some other alternative, if staff can't talk to the software folks, then that is the course that I am prepared to take in this instance. So I, I, I kind of hope we can delay the vote, but I yield, I mean, if you want to vote, we can do that. But I would like to see it wait till next, next week and, and try to get it taken care of then.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, we have Councilor Barnes.
For those of you, I never, I, I don't hesitate on being an odd man out. Doesn't bother me because if I feel I'm making the right decision, I'm gonna sleep. Well, if I'm not supported by anybody, win, lose or draw. What I'm hearing is that my motion will not be supported, which for me, it will not pass. I am committed to putting them to the test, letting them show their vote, and I, I'll sleep like a baby. In a final analysis, I want this to pass. I want y'all to be made whole. So if it's the will of this council for me to wait a week, I will. But I will be bringing it back. I will be asking for council to dig into the reserve fund or whatever to make these employees whole. If that fails, then I'm going to make a motion that the employees can get in advance. I don't want these employees suffering. And I, and I, and all, the majority of you councilors know me. You know, what I mean, I say, I don't mind bringing this back. I don't mind insisting on a vote now. But I will hold my vote back till the 11th. Is that when we're meeting again? And then it's gonna be show and tell. Because my, I'm, I'm not changing. It's show and tell time for this council to make these employees whole. So on the 11th, I will be coming back. I will make the same motion. Because what we've been hearing from this government here, we can't do this, we don't know, it might be this, it might be that. It's, it's keeping all of you who have bills, families and, and concerns in limbo. And that's not fair to do that to you. So what I will do, I will withdraw my motion, but I will be bringing it back on the 11th. And then it'll be time for this council to show and tell. That's just the bottom line with me.
All right, we have the city attorney would like to speak.
Just want to remind all councilors that 20 hours is built into the budget that's already been passed in an ordinance. So if you take 20 hours away from anybody, it's gonna take an amendment to the budget ordinance.
Well, I don't think they're talking about taking it away, I think they're talking about adding it.
If you, if you add it, that's fine.
Yeah, they're adding it, but still you'd have to amend the budget ordinance.
Right.
Okay. Okay, let's, hold on, we got Councilor Henderson needs a clarification on that?
Just for clarification, Mr. City Attorney, my, my request was for this additional 20 hours that would be going. I'm not, I'm not trying to take 20 hours away from anybody. I wanted the additional 20 hours that we're discussing right now.
Are you talking about across the board or just certain pay grade?
I think the finance director understood what I was asking. I, I want to know what the liability, the total liability would be if the additional 20 hours of pay to bring it to a full 40 were offered only to people other than department heads and also only to people under a, an 18 pay grade. Just for information.
That's fine. And that again raises an equal protection concern if you take one group and treat them different from the other.
So duly noted, thank you.
All right, let's see, we've got the Councilor, Barnes has a question of Clifton and then we've got other councilors in queue. Yes, sir.
Um, because you know, I just got finished saying, if I'm gonna bring the same, make the same identical motion next on the 11th. Now, if that doesn't pass, then I'm gonna ask for this advance pay. Now, what I want sent from you, Clifton, I want you to send to me, in other words, it can happen. You say it's really no problem to do that. They, that these employees can do that.
Advance pay across the board is much, much less a problem legally. If you advance pay and don't do it across the board only for certain pay grades, that creates equal protection.
Then I'm talking about across the board that it hurts any of the employees. Because according to what the city manager said and according to what I heard in the community, the question. community, the questions I received is that, and correct me if I'm wrong, that they will be able to advance vacation pay, they would be doing against their annual leave, I don't know what you call it. Is that what you?
Well, vacation pay and...
Or annual leave, leave that they already have, is that correct?
Yes. Vacation leave that they've already accumulated. But I think what, I think what the city attorney was concerned with is that some people, like, are receiving an email from someone who's only been here two months, and that person does not have vacation...
You can't please everybody. Make a long story short, if the circumstances, if the circumstances are there, they can do it.
And maybe we can figure out something different for a person with that circumstance.
Fine, that's the only thing I'm asking. I'm just trying to make these employees whole. Understand, I saw that email.
Yeah.
I saw that, okay? And it's just...
Remember, it was my idea, and I'm not, I'm...
No, 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 wait, stop.
I'm with you.
No, no, hold, hold, hold it. What did I...
No, no, I'm saying, I'm with you in about the person without the vacation.
I understand, I want to make a point of clarification. A whole week prior to this council meeting, before we had this, I called this young lady on the phone and asked that, right or wrong?
That's correct.
That's correct. I just want to clear that air.
Oh, okay.
Okay. I just want to make it clear that my intent is to make these employees whole.
I got you.
You, okay, all right.
Okay. Let's see, we've got Counselor Huff.
I just want to say to the employees, I appreciate your patience. I appreciate your participation. Going forward, remember this day, remember these days that you've been here. We need you to keep us informed on what's going on in your lives. It sounds like with a couple more weeks and a little bit additional information for us to try to figure out the best way to go, it sounds like that the council as a whole is looking out to try to make you whole. It sounds that way. It's just they want to see if there's a better way to do it as far as technology, as far as not being under 60 days in the reserve fund, and a few other options. So, just from me to you, and from this council, thank you for your participation, and hopefully you all will be happy employees when we come back on the 11th. Thank you.
We've got, let's see here, we've got Counselor Davis, is that you, or is that...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Counselor Davis.
Thank you. Predominantly, we've been discussing the matter of really trying to solve the problem that we're dealing with in making this change with the weekly paid employees. What is the top grade of a weekly employee? In other words, out of all the weekly employees, what is the top pay, weekly pay that we're talking about? We've used several examples, grade seven, grade 11.
I have to look at a workforce report to be certain, but if memory serves me correctly, it was about a grade 15.
Grade 15?
I think that was a supervisor level in public works.
And that would be the, for hourly employee, I mean, weekly paid employees, so it'd be a grade 15?
That was the highest grade, I believe, I've seen.
What are we talking about in general? What are we talking about that for a pay period, a 40-hour pay period for that level?
About what the pay would be for a grade 15? I can get that for you.
Pay grade 15, she has, is probably gonna be somewhere in the neighborhood of $35,000. $35,000? That's, I'm not looking at a report, but I'm just...
Okay, so, it'd be about 750. The bi-weekly, right, about $700 for a week for a grade 15.
And what...
Before taxes, that's gross.
So, that person or that employee's bonus would be about $350?
25% of the 700, so that'd be about 1...
175, well, a little bit more than that. That's about right. That's what their bonus would be?
No, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I obviously cannot divide, add, or subtract tonight. If the weekly amount for a grade 15 is $700 for 40 hours, then 20 hours would be 350.
350?
Yes, sir.
That's what I thought. So, the bonus would, the bonus is 350, right?
The current bonus, right, the current...
Current bonus, yes, 20-hour bonus.
The bonus for that employee for that week, well, it'd be paid in advance, under the current, what's being proposed to us, would be $350. So, they would essentially be out $350. Well, no, that's, I'm just using my words wrong, Mayor. They would have to make that difference up for that week, even though they would be paid more.
It's just council is, council is giving the time value of money of the delay as a full 40 hours. And so, a full 40-hour value would be $700.
For a week, so they would be, they would be...
They're not out anything.
In total, in total and whole, but for that week, roughly, they would be out 350. Okay, what's the highest pay grade in the city?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, this is grade 29.
Grade 29?
Yes, sir.
And what are we talking about, a bonus there?
Let's see, a bi-weekly, so...
But the 29 is not paid weekly, the 29 is paid...
No, it's not, it's paid bi-weekly, so...
But everybody would receive the bonus, right?
Yeah, but she would just, I want to make sure she did the bi-weekly, not the weekly like she did before.
It'd be about 1250.
1250?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, we've got Counselor Woodson.
Thank you. Angelica, could you do, I don't know about anybody else, but we came up with a couple options here for July 11th. Can you recap those or send it to us for consideration, so that when we come Tuesday, we know what options we have available? Because we said about advancing individual, we said in across 40 hours for everyone, and then what was the other option? We were going to check with the vendor to see if something can be in place. And while she's figuring that out, I hope that the employees and the audience can see that we are trying to make you whole. It's just that we have to look at everything, because it's not just the weekly employees that it's gonna affect, it's gonna affect all employees. And just like you making a decision at your home, you have to look at the impact overall. While we talk about money, there's money of your basic pay take home, there's more to it, because your benefits and everything that comes along with it. So, please don't feel that because we didn't take a vote today means that we don't care. I don't think anyone across this board was prepared to take a vote today, because today was supposed to be an educational versus for us, so that we can see the different options, so that we can make that decision that can benefit both parties as much as possible. I don't want anybody to leave here, or the audience, to think that because we didn't take a vote wasn't because we didn't care. We're just trying to make the right decision. But if you can tell them a mental, watching everyone's body language and their tones, you can see we want a resolution for you, we just don't know what the resolution is. And that's why I'm asking for her to, Angelica, you don't have to give it now, but if you can send us, or send me, because I want to be able to make that decision and take my vote where it should go, I like to know the options that we're going to have available to us on the 11th. So, that way, we can, you know, I can make that decision where I can lay my head comfortable saying I did the right thing based on what I had.
Okay.
Okay? So, don't worry about getting it right now, I just need a recap before the 11th. And thank you to the employees for taking an interest in being here.
That's what government's about, the government's about.
And the people working with the government. So, I want to say to you personally, thank you, but please give us the time to wrestle this animal and come up with a solution for you, okay? Thank you.
We have Counselor Thomas.
Ms. Alexander, I have a question. One of the things that has been said to me several times, that I want to make sure that I know the right answer to this, is about insurance premiums that are being taken out of the employee's check. If an employee currently is being paid weekly, in the month of August, they would get a paycheck on August the 4th, and if they had dental insurance, for example, that premium would be taken out. They'd get a paycheck on August the 11th, and the dental insurance would be taken out. They would not get a paycheck on the 18th, but they would on the 25th. On that paycheck on the 25th, will there be two dental insurance premiums taken out, or only one?
We will not double up deductions.
Say that again.
We will not double up deductions.
So, that if they miss the deal on the 18th, we are not going to make up for that and take it out on the 25th?
No, ma'am.
Have we notified the insurance companies that this is what's gonna happen?
We have.
So, that when they don't get the money for this person's dental insurance, their dental insurance is not canceled?
Right, we pay our insurance providers as we make deductions. We have sent notifications, our payroll supervisor has sent notifications out to our insurance carriers advising them that we are shifting the pay date, and so, there is a one-week shift in when we would be making those deductions, and subsequently, a one-week shift in which they would be receiving those deductions.
So, no matter what we do about the 40-hour piece, if you have deductions for anything coming out of your check, it will not be doubled under the new system?
That's correct.
Okay. I just want to say, make sure that that's clear, because that's been one of the questions and concerns that employees have had, not only that there would be a double up, but that there might be some consequence from the insurance, whatever. Okay, thank you.
We have Counselor Barnes.
Just so the audience know, the 11th is a day council meeting, so I know y'all won't be here. But you can rest assured, I'm not changing what I said I'm gonna do. It's about, it's show and, it's show and tell time, okay? But I appreciate all of you coming here and the support, and I've noticed family members who are here as well. Know that this is a real-life situation, we are struggling now. I'm not struggling, I, you know, I want y'all to be made whole. But the rest of the council here, they're gonna have to decide what they're gonna do, because my, my point is not changing. I made it clear, I'm only doing it because I like to have the support. I really would like to have the support, wouldn't want to see it shot down, okay? So, on the 11th, there will be a resolution of some kind, okay? Thank you all for coming here.
All right. That concludes the discussion on this particular item. As you heard, we'll revisit it on 11th. All right, well, can, Rita, can you address the man's question? He's talking about part-time employees. I don't believe part-time employees were getting the bonus, were they?
That's correct.
Yeah, if you'll come up and say...
In the mayor's budget recommendation for FY18, the bonus effects was recommended for all full-time employees and not part-time employees.
Hold on, sir, you're, just hold on a second, you're out of order, Richard. Yeah, well, it may have been the mayor's recommended budget, but that doesn't exist anymore, because council approved whatever, so it's a budget ordinance now. And so, is there a reason why, I mean, can you explain the difference, why part-time, full-time employees are treated differently?
Well, part-time employees, I mean, there's no set number of hours that they're guaranteed. They could work five hours a week, they could work 20 hours a week. It just would be close to impossible to guesstimate what the hours for that particular week would be for a part-time employee.
Okay. All right. Well, that's something that council can certainly take into consideration as they continue to look at these various issues. Are part-time employees paid weekly right now?
They are paid weekly. And they are currently on the lag.
And they're on the lag, yeah. Okay. All right, that concludes that discussion, thank you. Council will consider to take that under consideration. We certainly appreciate your time being here today, and it looks like we'll have a resolution on the 11th, so thank you. All right, Angelica, you want to get to the financial update, monthly financial update?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. All right, Angelica, you want to go ahead? Yeah.
All right, so, what you should have before you would be the monthly financial snapshot as of May 2017. Just starting on the right side of the snapshot, when comparing May 2017 to May 2016...
Go ahead, go ahead, Angelica.
In the general fund, the general fund is down 3.93%. There is a bit of a timing issue in the general fund as it relates to the recording of some occupation taxes. We recorded last May that weren't recorded in May, but in June, so that if those receipts had been recorded in May, though, the general fund would still be down, but it'd only be down about 1.7%. The other local option sales tax fund is down 3.63%. The Stormwater Sewer Fund is up 2.45%. The Paving Fund is up 1.34%. The Medical Center Fund is up 1.76%. The Integrated Waste Fund is up 14.73%. The Emergency Telephone Fund is down 1%. The Economic Development Authority Fund is up 1.76%. The Debt Service Fund is up 5.35%. The Transportation Fund is down 3.84%, though there was more grant revenue that we received at this particular point in FY16 than we've received so far in FY17. The Parking Management Fund is down 12.02%. And although the revenues are down in parking management, the expenses are down just over 5% when we're comparing FY16 to 17. The Trade Center Fund is up 7.15%. The Bull Creek Golf Course Fund is up 2.11%. Oxmo Creek Golf Course is up 1.14%. The City Center Fund is showing to be down 6.98%. And again, although the revenue is appearing to be down, the expenditures are down almost 5% when comparing FY17 to FY16. So, as far as the local option sales tax fund for public safety, we've recorded as of May 2017, 19.4 million dollars in revenue. We have obligations totaling 18.9 million, and that's for the public safety of the local option sales tax. For the infrastructure side of the other local option sales tax fund, we've recorded today 8.3 million in revenue, and we have current obligations of 10.4 million. Below, you'll see the other local option sales tax positions that were currently filled as of the end of May 2017 for the very... filled as of the end of May two thousand seventeen for the various departments. Um, if we migrate to the left side of the snapshot, in the general fund, um, we collected, uh, one hundred thirty million, um, five hundred seventy-four thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars in revenue. Um, right below, the revenue summary are the general fund expenditure summaries, and the departments that are highlighted here in yellow are the departments that are currently on the watch list, um, for the city attorney's, uh, litigation that, um, particular bucket is over budget. Um, of course, we're defending several million dollars in claims. Um, the employee benefits, um, bucket is, um, showing to be over, but that was due to the death and major disability benefit payments that we've made, wanting accrue those expenditures, um, and, um, any more of those expenditures in FY seventeen. And then there's the public defender that's on the watch list, and that's only because we pay that monthly contract in advance. So those are the operating funds. The, um, detail behind this snapshot is available, it's already posted, it's posted as of, of last week's meeting on the, uh, Finance Department website, um, for the, um, particular, uh, revenue lines that make up, um, the dollars that are listed in the snapshot.
All right. Uh, we have Counsel Baker.
Thank you, Director. On the, uh, the first penny, as I call it?
Oh, yes.
Um, this is through May, but I'm trying to remember how your accruals run, is that ten or eleven?
That's ten, because it's for, it's recorded in May, but it's for April.
So even if it's through May, which, that's definitely ten, that's what I was thinking.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. All right, it looks like that concludes, uh, we've got Counsel, uh, Davis.
Mayor, uh, point of personal privilege, please.
Sure.
Um, and counsel, I just passed out a draft that I've been working on for some time right now, and really wanted to try to make this as, as, um, non-confrontational as possible, so right now, we're in the middle of election cycles and all, but it just kinda came to some of the council's attention a while back, that there's somewhat a loophole in our system. Uh, you know, you, I think everybody understands how with the election process, if you want to run for office, uh, if you're a government employee or any working in the government, you have to resign your post, I mean, it's very clear in the law, and then, uh, and then you're, uh, capable of running for office. And what this ordinance does is basically make it, uh, fair and equitable across the board for anybody, so if you're receiving any kind of funds, I think the question came up, that if you were receiving funds or grant funds, uh, from this government, you should be treated just like an employee of this city. And, uh, so therefore, just trying to clean up a small loophole and make it equal for everybody across the board, fair, and everybody be on the same level playing field. And, uh, this is a draft ordinance, I've been working with the city attorney to try to find a way to do that, and, and I think this kinda basically, uh, sobs that, um, and would make it exactly what I just said, fair and equitable for everybody, uh, everybody would be playing by the same rules.
Okay. All right, so, uh, that's just for them to take a look at and maybe.
It's a draft, Mayor, yes, it's a draft, uh, and, uh, be glad to take any questions or receive comments on it, or if any council member wants to call me and, and discuss it in detail, I'd be glad, but really, it's real simple, the way I just described it, it's nothing really complicated.
Okay. All right, well, with that, it looks like our business is concluded. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn in a second. All those in favor, please state aye.
All right.
All right, we'll see you back, uh, let's see, July eleventh.